I guess it is six o'clock. All right, Larry told me we gotta roll, so we're gonna roll even though I got two council people just to step away. Uh, good evening, everybody. It is Monday, July 26th, 2021. I'm gonna call the Prescott regular city council meeting to order. Slowly take roll call. Uh, Bailey?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
Dar?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Thomas stepped away to get his water and Marina stepped away to probably get water or something. So, uh, when they come in, Jane, you can make a note they showed up.
Yep, got it.
Would all please stand and say a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to council on anything that's on the agenda? Now's the time to step forward, state your name and your address. It's on the agenda. It's not actually listed as an item. Well, yeah, we got some updates. Anybody wanna step forward and state anything? No, oh, wait, you got your own mic on. We'll let you present at that one. All right, uh, seeing no public comments, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which includes the regular city council meeting minutes of July 12th, ordinance committee meeting of July 12th, and public works committee meeting of July 19th.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
Motion made, second to approve the consent agenda and the three items I had listed. Is there any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is a finance committee. They have a resolution. They got one here. 1621 providing for the issuance of sale and delivery of a $4,465,000 taxable general obligation refunding note, series 21, or 2021A of City Prescott, Wisconsin, establishing the terms and conditions thereof, directing their execution and delivery, creating a debt service account thereof, and awarding the sale thereof. Tonight, we have Sean Lent from Colors in Wisconsin.
Just a quick update, I laid an updated one on your table tonight, so...
So you can follow along as Sean gives us a brief, uh, review of it.
And then also the sales day report.
So if I'm gonna start off the sales report, then I'll go to the resolution. I'm assuming that was correct, Sean?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mayor, and council, good evening, everyone. Uh, as Mayor pointed out, this is what I'm going to reference. And I'll get to the results in just one minute, but I did wanna update the council on some work that I and Beth and Jane have been doing. And that's on the Moody's report, so it's a couple of pages in. Uh, as part of the issue, we go through the process of renewing or updating the bond rating for the city. Historically, uh, for a number of years now, Jane, it's been at the AA3 level, which is a very, very good level, uh, especially for a city the size, in terms of equalized value and population, of Prescott. And I'm happy to report that they did maintain our rating at the AA3 level. One thing I'd point out, if you can look at the first page, uh, which is where we have credit strengths and credit challenges, and then upgrade factors and potential downgrade factors. This is a really nice, quick reference for the elected officials, for staff, for myself, just in kinda getting a sense of what they, when they look at Prescott, do they see any pressure points? Do they see any areas where maybe if it got better, we could start seeing that rating, uh, come up? So on the strengths, fund balance, liquidity, very manageable pension, and, uh, good wealth and income levels. On the credit challenges, uh, we do have an above-average debt burden and a modestly-sized tax base. Now, what I see in a lot of Wisconsin communities, because you're under levy limits, that pretty much all capital expenditures and economic development expenditures are being funded with debt. It's just reality, 'cause you can't fit it into your levy limit any other way. Debt is outside of the levy limits. So, this is a very common point that I see on a lot of Wisconsin communities when they, when we do a rating assessment like this. The things that you have control over, though, one in very much in particular, your fund balance and liquidity. The fund balance, the savings account of the, of the city. It should be reviewed all the time to determine what's the appropriate level for the city, and should you use some dollars, and you have in, uh, recent years, for capital expenditures. Always though, capital expenditures, not one-time expenditures. You don't wanna do that. That's a, that's where you're gonna be drawing it, drawing it, drawing it, and then that's a credit weakness that they'll notice, uh, quickly. So, that's a very strong strength of the city, and if you look at the factors that could lead to a downgrade, a sustained decline in available reserves. So, as the city has done in the past, and as I'm sure your staff will always bring to your attention, uh, it's just something important to monitor. It's important to feel that you have the right cash balance and use it appropriately for projects when you think the time is right. But just so you know, it is a major factor also of your, of your bond rating, okay? So with that, uh, which was really good news, uh, we took it, the sale out to the market this morning at 10:30. And if you go a couple pages back into the bid tabulation, uh, we really had a great sale today. We had, uh, nine total bids. There's three on the front page, or six on the front page and three more on the back page. And the results ranged from the winning bid out of Chicago, uh, Piper Sandler, at 1.17, uh, percent rate. You could see the next couple bids, uh, and these bids are, as you can see, are coming from all around the country. So that the AA3 rating that you have, uh, plus the Prescott's financials, really do attract a lot of attention. This particular issue, a taxable general obligation bonds or notes. Also, uh, there is a lot of appetite for these taxable issues. And again, it's taxable because we're involved with, uh, economic development and potential selling of land in the future, those kind of things, rather than the more typical street sewer and water stuff, which we would do tax exempt. So excellent results. We're really glad to see that kind of interest. And if you go to the next page, I was here about a month ago to talk about the pre-sale report, to get the sale process going. And if you look in the middle in our report, we had an estimated true interest rate of about 1.69. And with the bid today, that, again, that winning bid, if we round up, is about 1.18%. If the council accepts this bid today from Piper Sandler, the rates are locked in, so they would not change over the, uh, nine-year repayment term of the issue. Starting in 2027, though, if the city wanted to, you could make a prepayment. So, we were really pleased with the results. The other thing that changed, when we got the bid, originally, we had estimated that we would be selling about $4,465,000. But based on the final cost involved and based on the bid, that amount was able to be reduced to $4,430,000, which was good to see. And lastly, if you go to the last page, or second to last page of the handout, I guess I got two more quick things to touch on. The council probably recall, the two purposes of this issue were to refund the 2010 issue, and that was for savings purposes, and that's what you see here on, uh, on the refunding savings analysis page. So, if we would've left the 2010 issue alone and just continued to pay at the current rates compared to the new results, it's about 57, almost 58,000 less in interest costs over the next five years. So that was great to see. The other purpose, and this will go to the final exhibit, is to extend the, um, land purchase that the council just completed. Also would be paid by TID 5. So this issue that we're talking about today, 100% of it is expected to be paid by revenues from District Number 5. This is the cash flow overall of District Number 5. And the way we've set this up is to do a couple things. Pay the debt, pay other debt that the city has, pay your general fund back, about a million dollars, which was expected and is coming back with interest, very good. And then also, if you look at the column on the far right, we're setting it up hopefully somewhat conservatively, that we're building a cash balance in the TID Number 5 fund. And per our estimates, when we get out to about 27, 28, 29, probably 28 is what I'm estimating, we'll hopefully have enough money in the bank that we could prepay the debt and close it out at that point. And the council might recall, we did that three-year extension in order to give you a little extra time to be able to more comfortably afford the, the land purchase, all within TID Number 5, and not going to the general fund or other funds of the city to pay that back. So, Mayor, to your other point at the beginning, you mentioned the resolution. What would be needed tonight by the council is, uh, a motion, a second, and approval of the resolution at the $4,430,000 for the GEO taxable notes. And we certainly would recommend approval based on the results of the competitive sale today. If there's any questions, though, before going forward with that action, I'd be happy to answer those.
I guess I would make a motion on the resolution, uh, 16-21, the $4,430,000, second?
Motion made, second through resolution, number 16-21, resolution providing the issuance of sale and delivery of the $4,430,000 taxable GEO bonds, series 2021A. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
I just wanna say, it's very interesting when we talk to Moody's, because they don't even know where we really are, you know, so they ask some very unique questions of us as we're doing that bond rating, so they can find out a little bit about, about our area. But I think he's gonna come, he said sometime this year.
Yeah, he's gonna be in the River Falls, or, yeah, he's going to River Falls. He goes, "Maybe I can find Prescott from there."
He comes coming, guys.
I said, "I think we'll go get him."
We invited him to go, we'll put on down with them.
Oh, we'll try to, we'll try to make that happen, 'cause it does help a little bit when they can eye all the community. A little more than just the numbers.
Super.
Oh, this is a great sale, thank you so much.
Great to hear.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, roll call. All right, we gotta do a roll call. Uh, Patrick?
Or Tom, I mean.
Uh, yes, aye.
Oh, sorry, someone's calling in. They wanna vote, too, I guess.
Uh, Dar?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Marine?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Pat, Mayor. See you later.
Thanks, John.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the review of the 2021 audit report. Everyone had it in their package to review. I reviewed it in detail, 'cause I figured we will get a presentation. And Elizabeth, actually Beth, is here to give us the highs and lows of what that report says. And then if you have questions after that, we will, she will answer them as best she can. Go ahead, Beth?
So, basically, well, this was a very interesting audit year, I'll just say that with having COVID throughout the year and being in and out of the office throughout most of the year. And the audit, our auditors this year, our head auditor was promoted into Johnson &amp; Block as, uh, I don't remember what she is now, but...
Management.
She's up in management, so we have a new head auditor for our city. And so, getting to know her better and what she's expecting versus the spreadsheets that we were giving the other auditor for years is a little different. So we had some learning curves along the way, just with each other. But in general, um, I feel like the audit went well. A little more timely and made me a little bit more nervous with all the extra things that they were asking for. But when you see the results and everything came back, um, very well, so that made me happy. In general, uh, I did a lot of planning for the general fund. So if we have a lot of questions on our enterprise funds, just let me know and I'll get back to you. But, um, our general fund, we did see an increase of, oh my gosh, I have the wrong sheet.
Can you tell us what page you're on, on the summary of the present agenda?
Yeah, let's get to it.
I'm on the three, it's like the numeral, the three dot, the three.
Actually, into the audit?
Yep.
Not just the management letter?
Yep, I'm on the financial highlights page. So our fund balance, we had an increase of like $121,000 total for the general fund. Um, but we do have now an outstanding $817,000 extra in our unassigned. So we're gonna have a lot of work at budget season to be reassigning out our general fund. Um, I found that we had stuff assigned for Pearl Street and other projects that we ended up borrowing for and using different funds for. So now we have more that we get to assign to projects. And I'm not saying we should spend down our fund balance, but we should assign our fund balances to make sure that we know where they're going and what we're gonna do to benefit the city.
What do you mean, um, by assign the fund balance?
So right now, our fund balance is at 2.79 million. So, we need to keep at least 14% of that...
Right.
For...
Oh, I see what you mean, so, yeah.
So, that 14% of it is already assigned to just sit in a savings account and protect us. Emergencies. However, I would recommend having a lot more than that sitting there, just, there's a lot of things that can happen and stuff that can come up. And, and it also, it affects our Moody rating if we spend too much of our fund balance and that kind of stuff.
About $115,000 and put that, save it? I mean, I'm doing math right now, so I can come prepared to budget.
Yes, but like I said, I want a lot more than that. But we'll talk.
What percentage would you prefer?
25.
25, for sure.
25 would be good.
Yep.
I think that's good.
So...
Keep it from Mike that way.
Like, I know, like, because I'm in the right department, has her here, stop. So, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Beth.
So you wanna take roughly about $200,000 of that and put it into savings, which I think is a good idea. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, I would say for sure, if not more.
That's 25.
My hesitation is, is that I like higher numbers.
That's 25%, so... Just wanna just quickly do the math.
Of the budget, of the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, our budget, of the budget, yes.
Oh, okay.
The total budget, go ahead.
Got it.
Marine?
Yeah, um, Beth, did they also recommend that you make those assignments during the year rather than waiting through the end of the year? Did I read that in there someplace?
That would be an amendment to the budget, I think.
Yeah, that's what they were talking about.
So, one of the issues that came up with the audit this year is that, um, and I'm gonna blame this on my newbie in the treasurer position, still kinda learning what I'm supposed to be doing. But when we, like, overspent in our police department and our public works department last year, and they were all approved spending, but we didn't amend the budget.
Okay, what is that process? I don't think we've ever amended the budget.
We did it once before.
I did one time last year, but that was... The prob, this is where I feel like we have to have so many discussions come our budget meeting, because if we're gonna overspend and amend our budget, then we might not technically qualify for expenditure restraints and different things. And so, we have to be really careful. And so, my recommendation is gonna be actually budgeting more into contingency and making sure that we plan out our capital projects better before the beginning of the year than coming to council throughout.
But I thought that that's what they were saying, is they, you don't, they don't wanna see us, without amending the budget, take from the contingency. Is that what I read?
That's what they were saying, yes. So if we're gonna take extra out, I need to be making budget adjustments throughout the year.
A motion to take it from contingency and put it into the public works.
I see, I see.
So that way, the budget numbers actually match the book numbers at the end of the year.
Instead of transferring things at the end.
Yes, yep.
So, so that just amounts to a procedural motion with each of these budget requests as we...
Instead of just saying it goes from the contingency fund to this, we make a motion, just put that into that one.
Yeah.
Correct, Thomas, yep.
And I'd agree with that.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
You have to publish, too, after you do it and everything, so the public is aware that you made an amendment to your budget, just like we published at the beginning of our budget hearing. We have to also do any amendments, be published.
Okay.
Um, and other quick things is, this year, we ended up with a whole lot of journal entries at the end of the year to fix, not necessarily fix things, but just things that come out of the audit. And a lot of those, this is where with, I had a long discussion with one of the auditors when he was here, because I felt like I was having to do so many journal entries once the audit was finished in July. And I don't really like doing that, because I feel like I have to wait half a year to even see where our full numbers are at. But, um, and that's one of the things they kinda marked us down on, saying that we should be more on top of these. But then further in the audit, you read that most communities our size don't do those adjustments themselves, 'cause we don't have an accountant on staff, we only have a treasurer. And so they take it on them and do it, because in order for me to learn how to do that and what to do, it's gonna be way more costly to teach me and the time it takes to do it, where they have software that they put this in and it just calculates it for them, so...
So will they be doing that in the future, then, for us?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Well, part of it, I think Beth will understand some of the adjustments they made, and she'll probably catch them during the year.
Yeah, I was, I was crossing out some of them, but some of them are with depreciation of different, um...
Right, if you don't have their...
Capital equipments and...
County, you don't know what percentage they used last year.
And they have the software where they put it in. So in my eyes, I guess this is where I'm defending myself a little bit, where I asked what I can do and how I can do it, and then they're like, "Well, we do it anyway." I'm like, "Well, don't talk before it."
We didn't get a bad audit.
We didn't, no, 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 we did not at all. And, well, but I feel like I need to hit the high points and the low points.
They call them deficiencies, when really they said our audit went really well.
Yeah, no major findings?
No.
Throughout the entire report, so it's pretty...
Nope.
Any other points you wanna make?
No, I got really off track here, so...
But some of their deficiencies, we're working on in the office right now, 'cause we always get nicked, you know, 'cause there's so few of us in the office. So, like, whoever is doing, like, let's say, the cash receipting, running it to the bank and maybe updating it, but then somebody else is balancing the bank statement. So we're working out a different procedure within the office. So like, if I'm doing cash receipting, John will maybe do all the updating, Beth would take the money to the bank, but yet she would balance it. We're, we're working out procedures that way to try to get rid of some of those deficiencies that they said we've had before, so...
Did they recommend written procedures for cash?
We have them.
I thought we had them.
We have them, too.
Just personnel, having enough people, people's on vacation for two weeks. Somebody's gonna do it.
Separation of duties, and when you had an office of two for 90% of the year, that makes it real hard.
All right, any other questions about the audit from anybody?
No.
I think our enterprise funds is...
The enterprise funds are all really good. The only one that's a little lower still is Storm, which it will, it's, so we'll probably be asking for another increase this fall for Storm. And the water funds, we have the big water tower project and stuff coming up. And so, at this point, I feel like it looks like it's gonna be just fine, but I'll keep you posted.
We don't need a motion to accept the audit.
No, I just wanna review it.
All right.
Good job.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Beth. All right, next item on the agenda is National Criminal History Improvement Grant Program awarded to the Prescott Police Department, the amount of $21,820.
Yay!
And I think the chief wants to present this one. He likes to talk.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, back in May-June area, uh, one of the officers, um, and I wrote a grant for LiveScan um, through the federal government, they offer these every year. Um, with COVID and everything going on, the officers not really being able to take anybody into the jail, there was no way to, per se, book them in, get fingerprints, submit them to CIV or anything like that. So, we went and did this grant, and, um, we got approved for it. So what the deal is, is you have to match, um, I wanna say it's 10% or 2%, I don't remember what the percentage was. Um, so, the amount of the federal award was $19,646, and then the amount of match that I have to match was $2,183, for a total award amount of $21,829. So what I'm asking for is, is basically, we spend this money and the government reimburses us back, all but the $2,183 that I have to take out of my budget, which is there. So I'm asking the council to approve, um, the use of that, um, $21,829. But I'm asking for a little bit of a cushion, um, in case things pop up that we didn't plan for. The caveat to that is it all gets reimbursed.
But not probably till 2022?
Well, it gets reimbursed as you go and submit it. The problem, and the reason I'm, we're coming to council is because this is gonna stretch over two budgets. So it's gonna start in this budget, it's gonna end in next year's budget, because I have to have it completed by February, and we're just sitting here now, coming to you guys to request the, the frontage of the funds, so...
So the funds, whereas they're gonna come out initially, and then we'll, we'll be reimbursed, too?
That...
Well, it would probably be, it would just come out of our general fund reserves, but it'll come out of a grant expense account to start out with, and then it'll get reimbursed through grant revenue, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, Beth.
Oh, so the original, when the funds are spent, oh my gosh, I can't talk, we'll take it out of a grant expense account, and then when it comes back in, it'll go back into the grant revenue account, so they'll kind of wash each other out there. But in the meantime, if we were to go over and not have the funds back in, it would have to be just general fund reserves that would be covering.
Okay. So we'll just have to make sure we only do the award amount, and then that remaining $2,183, does that need to come out of somewhere else?
That comes out of my budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
That doesn't, that, that's totally, that's the part that I have to manage.
Got it.
So I'm gonna match that out of my budget. I just need help with the extra. But if I'm, my only concern is that if I, if I get approved for $19,646, my only concern is if we come up with something that we didn't foresee, we need to pay for something, the government will reimburse us, but it's not in that original amount that I'm asking for today.
You mean, they will reimburse you above the total award that they've granted us?
Yes, as, as you get things that you didn't foresee come in, um, labor costs and things like that, all you have to do is submit it and they'll...
Is it a certain percentage above?
What's that?
Is it like a, is it, do they have a percentage above?
They didn't say.
Okay.
It, do we still have a proportion to pay on that, like a 2% you pay?
An additional.
Will you reimburse 89%?
Yes, but that will, that would come out of me.
Yeah.
All right.
So at 20, at $19,000, only $2,000 is coming out of my budget. So I mean, even if you went, even if I went another $20,000, it would still, it would be $2,000 that would come out of my budget that I can, I can get. I've, I got that actually earmarked already for it, so...
Okay.
Any others have questions?
You just made a motion to approve the grant? And, uh, spending, he's asking... So I'd make a motion to approve the grant for the federal amount of $19,646, and then the remaining $2,183 coming out of the police budget.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made, second to approve the, uh, grant for the NC, or NCHIPS LiveScan Implementation 2020, the amount of, uh, $19,646, with the police department covering $2,183. Is there any other discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Motion carried, thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda, would be request for, uh, no, I forget, we skipped that one. Uh, request to purchase a John Deere compact utility tractor with snowplow rotary broom, cutter, pallet forks, and remote spout control HD in the amount of $54,032. Robert, would you like to present this, since it's coming out of your committee?
Mike's sitting here, so...
Yeah, but he might ask for more when he gets up there, that's my concern. Step up there, step up my podium, 'cause then I can get you on TV and they can hear you better. Say hi to mom while you're there.
So, we talked in our last meeting about the walking trails, and we're gonna be taking over all the holding ponds. And as of now, we have no way of mowing the holding ponds, holding a piece of equipment on it. So we went over to Green Image, and they happened to have two of these compacts come in that, they were leased, and somehow they had to let them go, the company folded. So, it amounts to, on these two packages, it's right around $7,000 off of the new price, if you were to purchase these pieces new. The one that has, the one that we would be purchasing has 38 hours on it. But like I was talking to Jane, the one, the 54032, they, the birdie, which is the flail mower that goes off to the side, which will actually help support the tractor on the hillside, and then there's six-inch extensions going with tires to bump them out a little more stable, and then fluid in the tires. That was an additional $8,262 on top of that 54. But you, you really need the fluid and you need the extensions on them tires.
Okay, so it's 54 plus, and then it's $8,000 more?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I see it, thank you.
I didn't get there either.
And where's the money coming from? We know the taxpayer.
Mayor's salary.
Well, that's gonna take quite a few years here, Robert. I mean, the only question, I suppose, where, of course, we got the picture showing kinda how it works. Again, what was the, what was the, where was it gonna come from, money-wise? Robert, did you know?
I don't know.
I think your committee approved it, so I was curious if you knew where it's coming from.
No, we haven't.
No.
It just got sent to here.
Yes.
Well, it depends, it needs to be reserved.
Actually, they sold the one.
I thought I seen it in the minutes, though. Go ahead, yeah.
They sold one, and then I told them that I would let them know one way or another tomorrow morning, 'cause they're kinda waiting, they have it sold if we don't purchase it, so...
We're gonna have to make a, a budget amendment and take it out of either our fund balance or contingency fund, correct?
Well, the other thing, we still have that... Well, the other thing, we still have that money for the American Rescue. That 200, well, 400, something thousand that we get over a two-year period. We just don't know if we can, we've got the money already. We don't know if we can expend it for something like this, but if it could be something like this.
If it goes into stormwater, hopefully.
For Storm or for outdoor activities.
Do we have impact fees that we're getting paid to right now? Would this fall underneath that at all or not really?
Um, not really, because we haven't been collecting, we're looking at more at stormwater parks. There's minimal amount in the impact money, yeah.
And now we have Palm Meadows. That holding pond is really steep. And then we're going to have West Ridge and then the most addition out there, and then Henne Cruz.
Greg Johns or whatever.
Yeah, we have a lot of holding ponds that we have to take over.
Yeah, it has some pitch to them. Yeah. All right, so basically the question being right now, staff, is do we say we take it out of capital fund for now or can't we steal anything from capital?
General reserves is the best place, probably.
Those are reserves. We'll have to make a budget amendment at some point. So council, the question is our reserves, basically that fund balance that John told us to keep high and Beth wants to keep high. We're going to steal from that with the understanding that once we find out more about that COVID fund, as I'm going to call it, we may just reimburse ourselves that route back to the fund balance.
Those funds are reimbursable that way, Jane?
We have the money already.
Oh, okay.
We need to figure out whether or not we can use it.
Exactly.
Mike, this really isn't a finishing mower, is it?
No.
I mean, it's.
There's a, there's a brush mower that goes directly on the back.
And then there's another mower that shifts off to the side that you can mow like, well, like when we go up Hollister,
you can mow them ditches with that.
Right, so it's more for ditches and like the ponds where we're not making it look pretty, we're just keeping it cut.
Keep it cut.
Just FYI.
Yeah, keeps the brush down.
And then some of our trails, they don't have to be perfect, but keep them.
Well, on the walking trails, when they have them that are going to be like dirt grass.
Right, that's what I mean, yep.
The mower would be great for that.
Yeah, because you'll hit a stick, it's not a big deal then.
Right, exactly.
Now, Mike, I'm seeing the options for snowblowing equipment and stuff like that. Can you give us any idea how that would be utilized to, I imagine it would be mostly to save time and.
Correct, because right now we have one and that's on our skid loader that we can do walking trails and sidewalks and all that. This way we would have two people on there. One would be on this, one would be on the skid loader. Because I think we were talking like over here at the high school, there can be, was it Bailey, four miles of trail? Just that area?
Yeah, they were in a design of four.
That'll take a while, you know. So basically, one person could be on them trails with one of those machines.
And some of them you won't end up doing because they're going to be cross country ski.
Broom, so we'd be able to sweep, you know, like parking lots, sidewalks.
So do you need a motion or what are we doing?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, I feel comfortable giving, stating that we, a motion to approve the authorization to go forward purchasing this equipment and you'd be coming back to council then for final approval of funds.
Second, I'd like to know what the actual.
No, no, we need approval.
I need approval.
So it's 82 plus 54.
Or what's the?
It's 82 plus the 54, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it'd be 62, 63,000, not to exceed 63, should we say that?
Okay, motion to approve the purchase of this not exceeding 63,000. It will be coming out of the reserves.
General Fund Reserves.
But not, Jennifer's Reserves not exceeding 63,000.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of this John Deere 3046 R Compact, the two-stage snowblower, heavy-duty rotary broom, rotary cutter, pallet forks, and what was the other one?
Flail mower.
Flail mower and a partridge in a pear tree. With the amount being not to exceed $63,000 coming out of the general fund reserves. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Do I have to do, we're not actually paying this one. Do I have to do the roll call?
Yes, please.
Okay, we're going to take a roll call. Thomas?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Marine?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, next item on the agenda is a pay request number two for the courtesy dock. Robert, do you want to present that too or no? I know it's in our packet.
Yeah, it's just that they're, they're finished most of the ramp floating dock and it was put in before the Fourth of July. I see it's all complete now, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for payment number two in the amount of $170,871.75.
Second, I do have one question. Do they get the part where they had the caution tape? Did he fill that in yet with the?
It'll be here tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Finish him up today.
Okay.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve pay request number two to River City Welding in the amount of $178.71.75. This is not the final, but it's just pay request number two. I'm sure we have a little contingency yet. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, I suppose this roll call two again. We'll start with Marine.
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Bailey?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
And Dar?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We just talked just a little bit about this. So we have put no fishing signs on the dock. And that's kind of basically because there really isn't any railings around that dock. And that is one of our greatest undertow areas in the whole river. And so that is why we're looking at the no fishing signs on that dock. Plus, if you get a boat or two, they get in there and get tied up with some fishing stuff, it's just not good. We talked about it at Parks and other property. We're looking at additional docks, you know, for down closer to the boat line. Again, everything just takes time because it's so much money, but.
Launch in the Parks Plan? That's not in there, is it?
Um, no, we'll have to add that.
Yeah, okay, because then we could just add that as a no, no fishing.
Right, yeah.
Because we changed the ordinance, basically. We're now, it's whatever stated within the Parks Plan.
Parks Plan.
It's referenced in there.
I know Bailey and I mentioned a fishing dock on North Lake.
Yep, yes, we did.
You know, away from, away from the beach, you'd actually like to put a dock there.
We looked at that a little bit.
Okay, good.
Two fishing.
He is putting five poles in along that dock. So on the one side, we'll put no fishing. Hopefully they can see that when they're walking down.
Yep.
And on the riverside, we don't open that park anymore. We have a lot of them and they're big, that are tied up.
Lot of pull on the dock.
Well, they had so much to happen. They go over to Hastings or wherever and then they don't come back on the dock.
Oh, I see. Sure, sure. Yep, no, I liked it in overlay park. Right, they park in three days or somewhere else.
Maybe when we start charging for it, that will start to turn.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that's right.
Tom and Beth, watch out.
Perfect, we got that one done. Next item on the agenda, health and safety update on the K9 fundraising. Who wants to present that?
Well, I do.
Quiet Lisa, I kicked her in the foot the last time you seen her.
Hop along up.
Slower down a little bit.
Remember, I do not like public speaking, but.
Well, you're not talking to the public, you're talking to just the council.
Talking to you guys.
Talking to the council.
Okay. My name is Lisa Johnson and I'm with the Prescott K9 Committee. This committee was formed four years ago, four years ago, that's a long time, four years ago, from the wishes of Gary Crickie's family after his passing to raise money for a K9 program. Gary was our former police chief who passed away from cancer in 2017. His wish was to get a K9 for the Prescott community. With the memory of Gary in mind, I'm proud to announce that we have raised the funds needed to get this program started. I would like to thank the rest of the K9 Committee for their dedication and hard work over these past few years. I would also like to thank the Prescott City Council for letting us go forward for the fundraising efforts and continued support from the Prescott Police Department. I would especially like to thank the many people and businesses that supported and donated to this great cause. Without all of you, we would not be where we are today, and we appreciate you all so much. Like we promised four years ago, we will continue to fundraise for the yearly upkeep of the dog. I have included a packet with cost breakdown for the program, funds raised, and some of the crime-related drug facts that you all might want to know. We are asking for the support for the city council to go forward with this wonderful K9 program, which we feel would help stem our rapidly growing drug problem in Prescott. A K9 would also help in many other ways like search and rescue, officer safety, criminal apprehension, and what a great addition to our school's dare program. We feel the addition of a K9 dog will make Prescott a safer place for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Lisa.
So.
Can I sit down?
Unless all, anybody have questions for Lisa?
Questions?
Yeah, I have a question. And Lisa and I kind of talked about this at an event recently. And I told her that my one concern over the whole thing, and by the way, I am an investor. I, I went down to many of the meat raffles.
And you did, and we appreciate that. Because we held many, many.
Many meat raffles.
But the point I was making, it occurred to me quite some time ago, was the ongoing upkeep of a K9 because there's a lot of yearly training and so on and so forth. And, and I'd like to know a little bit more in depth about some of those costs. But you mentioned that you were even going to continue the fundraising to cover that as you went, as we go forward with the service life of the K9, which in some of the stuff I've read is six to eight years, I believe.
Like, we promised when we asked initially for the fundraising to begin, we promised and gave our word that we would continue this effort. And just no different from everybody that donated, you know, even from the very beginning that we promised that we were going to see it through, and we did. And so I think that shows the dedication we have to this and that we will continually go forward to fundraise. There's grants out there. We have plenty of businesses and we have different organizations that also support this and will help us with the ongoing fundraising that we need to get. You know, we also have dog food. We had a, we had a vet that's paid for, but we're going to try to find one a little closer. You know, this was all four years ago. So we understand, you know, to the wishes of our police chief is to get a little closer, to try to do more local. So we're working on that. I hope, we have a lot of phone calls in for that, so that'll help offset the cost. But like I said, we have a lot of people supporting us and a lot of great donators and so we will see this through and we will get it done. Grants, meat raffles, whatever it takes.
Do we, do you have an idea of what annual, I guess, I don't want to say maintenance, but care and training costs would be roughly based on maybe experience or from other jurisdictions that you've?
On, on just regarding like the vet, you know, like the vet care I called around, you know, and that averages from like $300 to $400 a year for that. Obviously, we have the food. For the ongoing training in our budget, we've, we've put aside like $300 just for any ongoing training needed. But then other than that, if anybody else wants to elaborate, but we. Okay, no?
The 300 that we initially set aside.
Come here, Jesse.
Sorry.
Just here.
Say hi to your mom now.
Sorry.
Sorry to have made you do that.
It's all right, it's okay. The 300 we initially had set aside was for your two memberships that you have to have for your apprehension training and for your drug detection training. It's two different memberships you have to have. I don't remember the abbreviations form right off the top of my head, but it's roughly around $300 for the two of those. The dog food that we had set up through Frome, we're just waiting for confirmation from Stacy if that's still a goal. We have another option that we can explore for the dog food. Those are your two biggest expenses out of, after you're up and running. So training, after you get the dog and you're certified and everything, there's a lot of local training that's done through like Washington County, St. Craig County. A lot of agencies go to those two different departments and do, they put up a lot of training, they have their own instructors.
So how much time will it take you initially to go out from here to train with the dog? How much will that out there make it tough on you?
Whoever say, whoever gets selected for the dog, and yes, I'll say, I hope it's me, it's a three-month training.
Three months continuous, though?
Yep, yep. That's the cheapest route to go. That's $15,500.
Do you go every day away then?
Every day.
So we'd be down an officer for three months? Okay, that's just good to know ahead of time.
Aren't we?
When's our slow time?
Never.
Never.
They have trainings.
Well, that's a detailed discussion we're going to have to have, obviously.
Well, and with this too, like we reached out to two of the big K9 schools in the area. And along with this, they like, they helped hand select the dog. Correct me if I'm wrong and.
Like, for example, if like Chief decides to go with McDonough K9 School and I get selected to be the handler, Chief and I would go up there, we'd meet with their staff. They would find out what kind of a city we have, what kind of dog that we want to have, and then they, then they meet the handler and they try to match up with a dog that works with the handler that meets the city's desires.
McDonough's right up here in the cities?
Uh, Blaine.
Closest one?
Uh, closest is St. Paul.
Those are the two that we looked into.
But from what it sounds like, I mean, you're talking less than $2,000 roughly a year.
For their maintenance and upkeep? Correct.
So I think there is due diligence that we need to look at, which I think you've looked at before, is insurance.
Yes.
Correct.
It's just like any other officer.
Okay, so it's covered, so we don't need to increase insurance at all or anything? Okay, that's good to know.
And when do these trainings happen?
Right now, there's one, for example, with McDonough, he was like, why don't you get your guys in here in a month? I'm like, it's not going to happen, we're not.
Right, because we're not fully staffed, yeah, we need to be fully staffed.
Then there's another one in the fall with McDonough, and there's, I believe there's one in the spring with McDonough. St. Paul does one a year. They don't do any more than that.
Do you do yearly refreshers?
Yeah, there's constant training that you do, and then every year you get, you have to get recertified.
Do you have any estimates on the hours per year that you and the dog are going to have to be basically paid for shifts outside of Prescott?
Can you elaborate on that? I guess I'm not sure how to answer that.
Training.
But it says Paul, when you be gone from here, that Chief has to cover your shift while you're training instead of being here.
The training, I can, I can do the training sometimes on my days off. Or you can do training while I'm at work.
Fair labor standards allows my, allows everybody to stop. You know what I'm saying? So that's the Chief's concern that he would have to have, you know that. He's still got to, because we got to pay you, otherwise, fair labor standards, so we get in trouble, I'm pretty sure. If I'm not mistaken, I've learned that over the years, right?
True.
So what are your choices of dogs? Malinois or shepherd?
Poodle.
Poodle.
That'd be up to the Chief and whoever the handler and.
Basically the. The two types.
Yeah, there's like a duck shepherd, a Belgian shepherd, Belgian malinois. There's some mixed ones in there. It depends on what you want for the city.
Yeah.
And what the Chief wants for the city, so. They try to match it up with the best needs that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think once, once there is a dog, do you think that that will also increase your chances of fundraising, increase your revenue and fundraising?
I do.
Yes, and we've heard that from many. Like, I even reached out to the school, you know, and granted, like we respectively, you know, it took us four years, but we respectfully didn't do anything for a year during the height of COVID because it wasn't fair to ask anybody for money to do any kind of fundraising, we felt. So, but I did reach out to the school and told them in the future, if approved, I would like to work with them and do, you know, along with the dare program, make a wonderful, you know, like coins, the kids bring in coins, you know. So we have a lot of interest from a lot of different, you know, sources. And then that's the thing, it's a lot easier, once we have a dog and see a dog to, you know, we have so many supporters now and we're so thankful for all of them, but, you know, once we have a dog, it's so much easier to get those other grants or get those, you know, people more excited about it. But, but we have plenty, plenty of people willing to donate, that's for sure.
Before you can apply for some of the grants, huh?
I'm sorry?
I suppose you have to have the dog first.
Correct, yes, and that was it. We reached out to, like a lot of the grants we have, we just reached out to generic grants, you know, was nothing intended for canines at all. We just got lucky and people supported us, but there's plenty of grants out there once you have a K9 that we have earmarked and, you know, hopefully we'll be ready to go.
So I think, I think the biggest hurdle I would say, I'm going to say this, is that, you know, back years ago, you could get part-time help to help fill shifts when you're on, on training. It's hard to get part-time help, I'm guessing, much less, and full-time. So that's the only concern I know that we'd have, and the Chief probably will work on it, but when Jesse's gone for that, I'm picking Jesse because he's the only one last time that said he'd do it. But whatever officer's gone, we're one officer down again, and we're, you know, two down. I mean, we're surviving, but that's the only concern I would see us having. Now, it'd be nice if we get some part-time to help fill in while you're out and about, but. Other than that, just so you know, maybe there's a little overtime. A little more overtime. That's where the Chief will have to figure that out, but it wouldn't surprise me, at least for that officer. surprise me, at least for that officer goes on that three months of training, there might be a little more overtime that we're going to be paying out initially. And maybe, you know, do they, to hear the contribution to the overtime fund to help cover it. I don't know if that's what they want to do, but it's something to think about. But overall, I'm assuming council's in support of this?
I am.
I would really like to see an effort made to crunch all of the numbers to find out, you know, so we have a very good ballpark estimate, so that we don't have added costs trickling in, if you know what I'm saying.
Can I say something?
I was going to wait, I'm going to call on your chief eventually. Yes, sir.
That's really, really, really hard to do. You cannot crunch numbers in this situation because you don't know if that canine officer is going to get mutual aid out and, you know, end up on overtime. When it comes to paying wages and that kind of thing for a canine officer, you almost can't crunch numbers on that. The only thing that you can crunch numbers on is how much are your trials going to cost, your upkeep, and so on and so forth. Wage numbers, you can't crunch those. You just, I mean, I can tell you that, you know, let's just say, he's out on a mutual aid right now, three hours a week. Well, I mean, I don't know that, you know, it could be eight hours a week. He might not get called out for mutual aid. He might not get called in. You know, just one phone call to him, to that canine officer coming in, is two hours of pay, no matter if he's there five minutes or two hours. You can't really crunch wage numbers. You can crunch everything else.
Well, I'd like to see everything else crunched in front of me. That's, I guess what I'm saying.
Well, okay.
You can do, like, rolling averages over a number of years. So I think if you begin to think in terms of what kind of information Tom is talking about needing, maybe if you say, over the first year, it was this amount, over the second year, you can put an average in.
But this is pretty much like vet costs, right?
We haven't had a dog to make those rolling averages.
Yeah, but you can do rolling averages.
I would think the county has information. I would think River Falls has information because they have a dog.
But you're not, that's not, that's apples to oranges, though.
Well.
The county's 200 and some square miles, we're two. They're going to have more calls than we. You can't.
My question is, do you have to go on a mutual aid?
Do you have to? Well, no, you don't have to.
So as a lost child, I understand that, but do you have to? If we only have one officer on duty, that officer does not have to leave.
No, he doesn't have to.
I mean, there is that idea to start. I mean, we all understand that we're going to do what it takes on certain issues, you're going to send the dog, but that's the only officer on duty. I'm saying.
And in many cases, we've called for mutual aid to Pierce County, St. Craig County, and we can't get a dog. So.
Right now, there's not a dog available in Pierce County, period.
So just, so your point, Tom, I know what you're asking, but I think that first year is going to at least give us an idea. And chief's pretty good with watching his budgets, and we have to understand that there might be that budget amendment saying, we're going to need to take 10 grand out of the reserves to cover the overtime that we didn't expect. Then, you know, do we currate, or do we say, hey, maybe we just don't do mutual aid? I mean, you have the right to. Is it the right thing to do?
I just find it difficult to believe that we can't come up with a ballpark cost utilizing all the departments across the United States that have dogs and get a, just a ballpark figure for our budgeting purposes. And I'd like to see a little more attention put to that.
Anybody else feel that way? All right, Marine does.
I think I'd like to see if there's a community that's comparable to us in population, and just see, in having a dog, what are their, what are their labor costs? Just to have some sort of idea of the labor costs.
If they have five more officers than we do, if they have maybe less than we have, and even if they're the same size, it's not, it's not a comparable statistic.
It might not.
It might be happy with a guesstimate.
Right, just, just to have an idea.
Well, let me ask you this. If you found out what the guesstimate was, does that make your decision whether you approve the canine or not?
No.
No.
It'll just let us know for budget purposes how much we should put aside.
Correct.
Right.
But in reality, you're supportive of this. So, you know, we're going to continue forward. You like that number for the budget period to say, hey, I think you should budget 10 grand in overtime and whatnot.
Well, we, you know, we can't argue with an entire community that gathers together and raises the funds to do this. I personally can't argue with it. It's, yeah, obviously, we're going to go forward with it, or I am. But the point I'm making is, I would like to have, put some thought into this so that we don't have surprises coming down the pike. That's it. It's just planning and budgeting. That's.
I think what we also got to keep in mind is, this is a cop dog. I mean, the dog is going on calls that are, could be dangerous. I mean, so it could get shot, it could get hit, it could get, I mean, so there's that. But that's why they're fundraising for a lot of the stuff, because I'm assuming you're going to be able to, for how much money you've raised, I'm assuming you can raise 300 bucks a year.
Well, and I would also say for that officer, or that canine that might get shot, might save an officer from being shot.
Yeah, I'm just saying in terms of like a vet bill, like, if you, if you, just from like a budget perspective, I'm just saying, like, if they can raise this amount of money, I'm pretty confident that they can raise $300.
And we also, as you can see, we have already a cushion, and we are not going to stop fundraising, you know, while this dog is being ordered, while everything is being ordered. We are continuing fundraiser. We have grants still out there waiting. We just got noticed today, which is that 2,500 Pierce Pep and Care Grant, we got awarded that today. You know, so I mean, we have much more out there that we have in the works, that we want to cushion. We want to have money.
I think from a budget perspective, like, I would cushion it more. And then, obviously, I don't know how it would work with reimbursements of like a grant or donations. I'm looking at YouTube, because I have no idea.
We can take, we can accept money to be put towards certain, for wages or something for officers and/or for the dog?
And I think these guys, when you've got.
I don't know that.
But when you budget anyway, right now, what you do, they take a rolling average from previous years?
Right.
To look at what the overtime is. So this will just have to be another factor that's included into that.
The budget's a guess, no matter what.
And then we can just do the rolling, what Marine suggested is for the next year, then do a rolling average. I don't think there's any issue with that.
And again, we can accept donations to the city of Prescott towards the police department's budget for their wages or whatnot, correct, Jane?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll keep our foundation.
Not that we're going to come dipping every time we get a little overtime, but you know what we're saying.
Give it to you guys because they can get there.
Yes, they can get a tax write-off with us.
Sure.
Correct.
I just want to say one more thing.
Go ahead, Marine, on the other end.
I am uncomfortable putting the burden of policing on, as an extra burden on the community. And I, if we were going to do this program, I believe that the city should have funded it. And I will say, I'm in favor of this, because you did such a fabulous job. But there is so much potential for conflict of interest when you have an outside group who is solely funding a program that we have accepted as part of our police, our police long-term strategy. So that, that has always been my objection. And it's not that I don't like dogs, you know, or anything like that. But I am concerned about pushing an additional burden on the community when, if we decide this is a strategy for our police department to pursue, we aren't funding it.
So you would like us to basically have the funds prepared as if we were going to pay for it outside of this, basically is what you're saying?
Yes, I believe that's what we should have done.
And I believe the council made the decision, if we would go with this, that someone has to fund it initially. After that, the council agreed to cover after that. But I think when they came to us, we said, you raise the money and you pay for all the initial investment. And then from there on, the city would carry it forward.
There is no just one investment. A dog's training or a dog's life is about, I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm remembering seven to nine years is, and then you have to get another one, and it's all the same training cost all over again. So again, it's, if we're going to have a canine unit, we should have funded it.
And that's your opinion. I appreciate that. Anybody else have a thought?
Well, I think that, and I hear what you're saying, Marine, I think a lot of cities who have dogs, especially municipalities of our size, it starts like this. And I think that we are unique. I think because we are a river town, I think we see a lot of things that come over the river from one state to another, where I think having this dog is an added sense of protection. And, you know, if you look at what's happening in this community in regards to increased, you know, drugs and everything else, I just feel like we're sort of, we're at a turning point. So this is not something that, I mean, if we get to, you know, three years into this and it's not working, we have another discussion. But I do think that this is something that we need to look at. That's my personal opinion. And I think it's something that, I think it's just going to be an added part of our community that offers safety to our residents. And will keep, hopefully, reduce the drugs that are running through this town. And, well, that's my opinion.
I think we just need to work out the details. Like, you're going to, if someone's going to be gone for three months, we need to figure that out. If we're going to do these mutual calls with the county and whoever else, we got to figure that out. We got to figure out how we're going to find the money and the budget, because we can't rely on them long term.
I can, I can tell you daily that that stuff that you guys are talking about right now will now take place.
Okay, because the money's been raised.
Now that they've, they've raised this money, and it's right there in front of us, now that extra work will start taking place. I made, Jesse can vouch, I started making phone calls today, asking questions about things. It's not, this is not one of those deals where, oh, great, the Canine Foundation got the money, we're going to get a dog tomorrow. No, this is about a year out. And these guys, the whole, I assume the whole foundation knows that, because this is not just something that you do in two months. I got to get fully staffed. It's going to be six months to even get a car, according to Ron Murphy today. So this is not a quick thing. We have plenty of time to do this.
So for, for conflict of interest, though, I do want to follow up on that. For conflict of interest, so you're saying us receiving donations from a nonprofit could be a conflict of interest because those residents are here? I'm trying to understand and make sure that we're not doing a conflict of interest.
I, I didn't, did I say conflict? I didn't mean conflict of interest. I just, I believe that it, if the city commits to a canine program, it should be fully funded by the city.
Okay. So not a com, I just want to make sure we just clarify that. So not a conflict of interest for you guys donating, because there shouldn't be any, okay?
Can I say one last thing, too? Just as a committee, like, obviously, we are just giving the money over. We have nothing to do thereafter. You know, we will continue the fundraising, but obviously, it is up to the police chief to do, you know, we're done, and there's no conflict after that for us.
The city will own everything with their dogs. We own bars, we own dogs.
The foundation is making a contribution to the city.
Right, we own everything.
And so it will become city funds.
Like, the vehicle will be the city's property. Yes.
Yeah, so they're basically.
I don't know. Can you, okay, all right.
We'll check with Jane, you can ask that.
So do you, do you need a motion? Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I would entertain a motion to approve moving forward at the chief's pace.
Motion to approve at the chief's pace.
Motion made second to approve moving forward with the canine, with the money from the Canine Foundation, whatever we call that, will be donated to the city and the chief, and however, he needs to move forward with getting it done in probably the next year.
Yep.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, Lisa. Thank you, committee. Thank you, everybody that donated to the cause.
Thank you, Valerie. Interestless, white, free.
It was a bad, but it worked. Couple of years there. All right. Next item on the agenda for health and safety is closing hours for the bars. We have, what, 30 days to keep it where it's at? And then after that, we either got to change ordinance, is that why it's up on the agenda?
June 29th is the date that we put it in this way. So July 29th is the date that it's back to the regular hours. I just want to make sure that he's comfortable with that.
What does the chief have to say?
Yeah.
I don't know, he's busy taking pictures.
There's a reason for that.
He wants pie.
Okay, I get it now.
So chief, how's it going down there in the month that, or almost the three weeks it's been 1:00?
It's, it's gone good.
Jesse, how's it going down there?
We've adjusted our patrol procedures. I'm not going to lie to you, it's worked out well, because we've been able to get somebody, at least one person down there while they're patrolling. We've had, you know, Jesse's worked two extra shifts for us, a couple of the other ones have worked some extra shifts, but I don't always have, last weekend, I don't think we had anybody. So that's not always going to be there, that extra bar-only car. But it's, it's actually, it's going pretty good.
So is there an officer down there at closing usually now, or what's?
Well, Friday night, he was down there at closing, because he was strictly downtown, downtown car. That's it. He didn't go up, he didn't go up and help out on one call because we had an officer that's at the jail. But that's their job. That's what I pay the overtime for.
Is it always closing, or is it 10:00, or they might wander, so letting them know we're there?
No, they're down there from, what time did you come in, 8?
8:00, I started downtown.
Yeah, so he came in at 8, and all they're doing is walking through bars and hanging out downtown.
See, they could put a uniform on Rob without a gun, send him around.
The problem is, the problem is, and it's, it's been okay as it is. There's going to be times when they're not going to be down there by close.
But you know what? That's okay. People just know that they're there. And once in a while, they won't be, and hopefully, they all still behave.
Right.
So at this point, if it went back to 2:30, we let expired.
Let them open.
July 29th, we'll just kind of see what happens. We can always change it if, for some reason, the bars can't control the crowds, and the crowds just don't want to listen to the bar owners and/or the police, we can always change it back.
I will say, when I, like I said on the last thing, they said the walkthroughs are the biggest improvement. I chatted with Jesse that night. I mean, it seems like it's going well. And then with the additional staff that they've added for security at both the bars, actually, has made a difference, I think, too.
Again, we won't always have.
So thank you to the bars as well for making the improvements we've asked for.
We'll always have an officer, but we'll do what we can.
Okay, so July 29th.
We'll just let it expire then, because we did say 30 days, just so everyone understands right now. All right? Next item on agenda, set a meeting date for the next three months, because Bailey loves meetings. She loves meetings.
We put her on.
So who's on the parks committee?
Rob and.
I quit.
Anytime my stuff comes out.
She's taking some of the money or something for Public Works?
You just wait when that budget time comes. So is there like, do we want to do the day before, or the same day as council meeting, same day? Because I'd like, it'd be nice to keep it the same day.
Just keep it the same day, but I don't know if you should do it in a council meeting. Sometimes it's a little long.
Yep, I would agree. So if we did like a, I got to get to, hold on, I got to get to the right month here. August, here we go. So if I did like the second, the second's not a council meeting, right?
No, third.
That's a.
Third Monday of the month.
Yeah, third Monday of the month.
What is that, the 16th?
That would be the 16th, whatever the rest of it is there.
Okay, so we, we'll just do the 16th. I'm going to put that on here, Parks.
Let's just say the third Monday of each month.
Five. We do 5:00.
5:00 p.m.?
Yep.
Okay.
5:00 on that one, and then, yeah, we'll just do the third Monday.
Okay.
Does that work?
And that way, we can get on.
It's October 20th?
Oh, I mean, that's my birthday. All right, that's fine.
Well, we can get it on Cedar's schedule then, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
5:00 on the third Monday of each month, and we'll continue on with public works.
August, September, October?
Parks and public property. We've got a lot going on.
Yep, October. We just need to have a regular cadence to make sure that we're not missing any, any dates or anything that are critical.
Yeah, we have lots.
5:00 or 5:00?
5:00.
I have 5:00.
All right, sounds like a winner. Move on to licensing, or license, request for amplifier and alcohol permit for Freedom Park Sunset. How do you pronounce that, Surray?
Suare.
Suare, sorry. Phone raiser on Saturday, August 21st, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. That's pretty short.
Motion to approve the license for Freedom Park.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Motion made and second, approve the, I think, the amplifier permit and the picnic Motion made and second to approve the, uh, I think the amplifier permit and the picnic license for Freedom Park uh, for August 21st from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. approximately. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance Commission, do we need anything for ordinance committee?
I'm still working on some stuff, but we'll get it.
The reading, so we got to get out.
Okay, next one. Planning Commission, that's usually the first Monday, so we have nothing. Public Works!
But it, we do, we will have a planning commission, just so everybody knows.
Yep, we have a planning commission, first Monday of the month. Uh, Public Works Skate Park closed starting August 2nd until October 4th. That's just an announcement, right?
Right, and the reason that it's closed is because they're working on the water tower.
So just FYI, public skate park up here by the water tower is going to be closed from August 2nd until October 4th due to water tower refurbishing.
Add some signs for the kids at.
There's signs up there.
Okay, cool. All right, cool. Okay.
Alternate day watering ban is going to start here in the city of River Falls, basically.
No, how about the city of Prescott?
The city of Prescott, sorry. I work at River Falls. Hey, throw stuff at me, that's a no. Uh, alternate day water ban, uh, two reasons, right? Probably, I don't know, we're pumping plenty.
We are pumping, right?
In reality, it's, uh, because we have to shut one of the towers down, so our reserves won't be as much. So it's going to be odd even watering, even days, even number of houses get the water. Odd days, the odd number of houses, odd addresses get to be, get to water. And that goes until probably next spring.
Well, we'll.
Well, once they're done with the water tower, you know, then it'd be, uh.
October.
Not too many people water October, that's why I say my, that's why.
You'd be amazed, Mayor.
And it's not that.
You're right.
You know, if they did run it, I mean, I'm sure the wells would keep up. They're still going to pump 2,000 gallons.
Oh, Mike, you got to go talk to mom.
So I just.
Put it in, put it in, Mike. Don't let it get buried on TV.
I want to clarify one thing.
Go ahead Bailey.
New developments with new sod. You got to let them do that. They have to water that.
Yeah, and I've been talking to the developers as they come in.
So new development, new sod, they got to contact city hall and let them know.
And how about vegetable plants?
Gardens? That's different than ones. I think you can water probably your gardens, even then though, every other day your garden.
Your garden should only have to do every other day, yeah.
But since we're, um, doing higher, uh, fire flushing, hydrant flushing, all that kind of stuff, we're going to try to limit it to this since we're only on one tower. And I'm sure the two towers, they're pumping 1,000 gallons a minute each. I'm sure they'd keep up, but just to make it a little lighter on the motors, so they don't overheat.
With the tower down, it's going to go odd even.
Right.
Again, if you have new, new sod, contact city hall, let them know, and vegetable gardens go right on with lawns every other day.
And we're cutting back on the rotting too, as far as on, like tomorrow, the next day, we probably will not be rotting in this heat. You know, and the drought.
All right.
People don't really like, they've got a drought and we've got water running down the street.
When is hydrant?
They've been doing it.
Okay.
They just want to see what they can.
Yeah, we've been doing it this week, last week.
So the ban?
So it's possible there might be a little cloudy water here and there throughout the town, but normally it clears up pretty quick.
It does, it does.
Yep, so the ban starts now until probably the end of October-ish. We can announce it or something still.
Yeah, unless we get lottery.
All right, so just FYI, watering ban, for those who are listening, spread the word for us, please.
Okay.
Uh, next item on the agenda, request for third party to print and mail utility bills. Who wants to present that one?
I mean.
I can do that.
Go ahead, Robert.
We have, uh, I gotta find it. Bayside Printing, uh, has contacted us and said that they can, uh, stuff our envelopes, pay, send out all our utility bills and all that for less than what we're doing it for right now. And that frees up more staff time. And so, I mean, we all know that the, you know, we could use that.
Boy, so I know.
I mean, if you just look at the, at the cost savings, even though, once it's in Green Bay, isn't it?
Yeah.
Even though it's in Green Bay, they can still do it for less than what we're doing it here. So I mean, it's kind of like a, a no-brainer.
Yep.
It's definitely a no-brainer.
So we just, we just send our file over.
Entertained.
Yeah, we just send our file over and they'll print. The only problem they have, they've also gotten swamped now. So it's probably going to be a couple of quarters before they can get us into their system, so.
So as we. Motion to approve using Bayside Printing LLC to have them do our, uh, send out mailers for.
Printing mailing utilities.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, Tom.
Just a, a concern, and that's, uh, do we lose flexibility that we may regret?
We're gaining.
Yes.
We are gaining, hands down, with the number of staff that we have. To have somebody in our office with the amount that we have to sit there and stuff envelopes, we are gaining flexibility.
It's a whole day.
To address.
Same machine that I used to use that I got my haircut in twice? Yeah, let's go ahead.
I think we'll be gaining flexibility and we'll also be able to focus more too on like other things that we have going on. So it's, it's wasted time.
I guess, I hear, here I go again, but do we have any numbers associated with that?
There, there are numbers, they're in the packet?
I, I kind of saw that.
Yeah, so we're, we, we can't do the bulk mailing, that's where we get into trouble.
Right, the bulk, we can't get bulk.
We can't get the bulk, and so they can bulk us with the rest of the.
And then what happens too is in December, in January, you're doing bills, utility bills and tax statements at the same time. So now you're talking two and a half days of doing this when you should be doing end of year things.
We do about 24 hours, 24 of stuffing, of stuffing, yeah.
It's not like a long-term contract.
No.
So if we decide it really isn't working for us.
Well, it would be a three years.
This is a three-year?
It'd have to be a three-year contract in order for them to waive our upfront fees.
I didn't see that.
That's $1,600.
Yeah.
Which at, which at this point, like with our staff levels, do you see them changing overnight?
No, 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 no. And we're only increasing, everybody's getting two meters. I mean, they're getting the regular meter and their sprinkler meter, so for every house that comes in now, we're.
I mean, I'm honestly surprised we haven't offloaded this yet. I didn't know that until we reviewed it at Public Works and I was like, I did not realize we were still stuffing envelopes at city hall.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, oh, I guess now you have personnel, anything for personnel that we have right now?
I don't think so.
Think we're doing good?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, Matt starts what, next week?
Yeah, Monday.
This is FYI. Um, communication, new business. Anybody in the audience that wants to speak to the council on anything? It's just public comment, no discussion. Step forward, state your name and your address. Jane Brandells, Wisconsin. Okay, go ahead Jane.
Well, here's what, we, we just want to kind of make everybody aware. Our lead time for everything has gone, it's astronomical. We're 16 weeks out for getting meters now, so it, and we balked up a little bit. But again, when two meters are going and we're getting eight building permits at one time, you know, it's really going fast. Um, the metal for the signs, it's taken a little bit longer to make signs. So everything that we're looking at has got a greater lead time.
In regards to your new construction properties?
Just anything.
Anything, you know, so people are, they're upset because we can't get some signs up. We can't get the signs is the problem.
Can we post something on our website just to say like, due to supply chain constraints?
Yeah.
Like right now, we are having a hard time getting supplies that we've ordered months ago.
Signs, meters, everything.
Just so you can at least cut down maybe on the rate balls you're getting.
Yeah, so, so just so everybody's kind of aware of that.
I mean, that's everywhere. I don't know how everyone doesn't know that, but I mean.
But. I know, we're 16 weeks out on a meter. I don't know what we're going to do when, that's, that's our biggest thing.
Do what you can do.
Yep, exactly, so.
All right, any other public comments, council?
I, I have one.
Go ahead, Robert.
At Public Works, uh, Tom McFlanum came and expressed his, uh, displeasure that his trees were hanging over the city and he had gotten a quote from, uh, save a tree. And he wanted us to give him money and we told him that the city would take care of the city. And I went and looked today and, but lo and behold, there's the city, cut in the bank trees out of the boulevard.
Oh.
So that problem has been taken care of.
We lost our engine. We lost our engine on our wood chipper and we lost a few pumps on our lift. So we got the lift going. So we'll be finishing it tomorrow morning.
Then you're finished.
Believe that is. Okay, well, thank you, Robert. Anything else?
Thank you.
I received some comment from some residents about the no fishing signs on the dock. And, um, was asked to share that, um, we would like to have that if possible, um, maybe amended or adjusted. That, um, we do understand there's a safety factor as I, as they expressed themselves. Um, and know that things have happened down there in the past with folks and, you know, rivers are dangerous. But the idea that possibly, um, maybe no fishing on the weekends when the boats are there at the busiest time. Um, and leaving an option for folks who would use it during the week. If that was something that could be considered somehow.
I would like to comment on that. So we're doing a lot of work right now, like with the kayak launch. Is we're trying to figure out how we're going to identify these public spaces with parks and everything and find the uses for them. And so what I would be hesitant on doing is saying like, yes, this is going to be a permitted use when we've all had discussions, like we know we're going to work on the fishing pier and get a quote for it. We know we have another fishing pier that Bailey, Bailey would really like, which Mike, you've looked at it with Wade over down by the kayak launch. So I would be hesitant to put that in there just because of one, the amount of traffic. Two, if anybody gets any lure stuck in the dock, there's a lot of kids I've seen running barefoot on that thing, even though they probably shouldn't be. That's not our place to tell those parents that they shouldn't be doing that. So I, I would be hesitant to do it because it's not in the grand scope of the parks plan to have fishing on that dock.
But it is in the grand scope to have fishing some point, but right now we have nowhere else and.
They can fish from shore.
Yes.
I fish from shore a lot, just so.
And we really haven't been unfortunate during the week. It's weekends is when we're going down there, telling them to move out because some of them will not let a boat come in. They will not reel their line up. Or they leave all their containers down.
Oh, yeah.
So, but during the week, I mean, we haven't been booting them out.
Yeah.
I just.
I mean, I'd rather see the young kid down there fishing rather than go over and ride on Guy Street building because we just kicked him off and he got mad at us.
But the other thing, as soon as we open ourselves up knowing there is a liability, we lose our recreational immunity is what happens.
We cannot do.
So we have recreational immunity right now, but as soon as we know there's a liability, which I think we all know that is the greatest area of the undertow of that river. I don't know how many, how many we've had that we've had to pull out of there. Yeah.
How soon are we going to have the fishing dock?
Well, we did get a quote of about 100 and, I believe it was around 120.
Yeah.
For a 200-foot dock that will match the one that we just put in.
So we have.
And 100 feet of that will have a railing all the way around it for fishing.
Yeah.
The other 100 feet will be down towards the landing.
Uh huh.
That you'll pull up, park and walk back and take your vehicle and put it to park. But 100 feet of that will be just for fishing.
So we have several different grants to go after. There's two, there's a DNR one that we can go after and touch feel the water. Then we can qualify for that. We also have the multimodal, which is coming up this next year, which we need to evaluate to see where we want to use that. So there's a lot of opportunities for money out there that we could go get, especially since this is on the water. But I, I guess I am not totally on board with putting fishing on that dock. I mean, it's brand new. We have undertow, there's no, I, we can't risk losing the recreational stuff with how many projects we have going on.
And we always love to let them fish, but again.
Yeah, totally.
And I'm one of these, just because I'm a code enforcement guy, is once you let one person do it, oh, they don't, they don't enforce a sign that. They're fishing all the week, during the week, weekends must be okay too. That's the problem. You can't just, well, just the weekends because it, well, obviously.
And that should be the motivation for our Parks Committee to move faster on some of these projects when possible. Because we know that there's a lot of asks and we have a lot of people coming at us left and right, asking, why can't I do this? Why can't I do that? Why are you dictating like what we're going to do here now? It's just, we have to, there's a huge picture and we just got to keep driving towards it.
And they're building the dock right now for this steamboat property.
Yeah.
So.
All right, thank you. Yep, thanks for bringing it up. Other public comments?
The other thing to remember though, is government can't work fast because we have so many protocols. So we have to get bids and we have to do all the engineering and everything that goes along with it. And I understand that, you know, it would be nice to say we could do it tomorrow, but we can't and we just, we have to.
But that's why we also have monthly meetings now that are going to be scheduled to ensure that we have the proper cadence to keep traction.
Yeah, yeah, see, and that, and that, and that's the other thing, yeah. So right away you get the DNR involved, you got clam study that costs you thousands of dollars.
Yeah, environmental impact.
Exactly.
Going fish for clams?
Can't. But we had to move a few.
All right.
They used to fish for clams for buttons.
No, we had to move a few.
For buttons. All right, so we're going to move on to the next item. Just a reminder, the West Central BioSalads meeting, August 18th, 2021. Where's that at again?
Baldwin.
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 If anybody wants to go, let me know.
Anybody interested? I, I think it's on my calendar.
You're going? I, I will be going.
Holman, yeah.
I'll go.
You'll go Bailey?
And then Rob's going.
Okay.
We might have to careful. All right, um, other business, any, any other business the council have that you want to bring up? Can't make a decision, not if we talk. If not.
Motion to go into closed session.
Motion made, set to go into closed session pursuant to 1985 1E deliberating, basically possible land sale. All, well, we got to take a roll call to go into closed session. Dar?
Aye.
Sat? All right, read.
Aye.
Rob, all right, Thomas, all right, Bailey.
I think you've already missed.